Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Quincy School Committee for Wednesday, December 11, 2024. Superintendent, we have a little call, please.
Mr. Begone, present?
Present.
Mr. Gattro?
Present.
President.
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 I don't have any. We're. I'm. Of open forum. Opportunity for community input regarding the. Can you hear me? Is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or a non-resident employee of the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than three minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Residents or non-community persons may submit written statements of up to 300 words to the school committee at QSC Open Forum at quinsypublicschools.com by 4:00 PM of the day prior to the posted school committee regular meeting. Written statements will be posted on the school committee section of the Quincy Public Schools website by noon on the day of the posted school committee regular meeting. This evening, we do not have any emails that were submitted for this open forum. So if there's anyone who is present that would like to speak at open forum.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I hope you can hear me. Frank Santoro, 14 Lowest Terrace. I'm here again tonight, and I'll continue to be here when this issue comes up. As you put Lunar New Year into your policy subcommittee. I am here, and I'm sure people are here, because they understand the importance of what this celebration means to the Asian community and to the majority, and I repeat, the majority of your students. We consider this a very important celebration. The City Council thinks it's a very important and understands it's a very important celebration. Mrs. Bertios, Mayor Koch, understand that this is an important celebration to the Asian community, and someday, maybe not this year, but someday, the majority of the school committee will understand the importance of this day. Thank you.
Grace Young J., 6th Florence Street, Wallaston, parent of two children in QPS, a sixth grader at Central Middle and a fifth grader at Beechwood Knoll. Dear members of the Quincy School Committee, I will be reading a letter on behalf of the Citywide Parent Teacher Organization with permission from our co-presidents Jill Saban and Kate Campbell. I am also the treasurer and Equity Diversity and Inclusion School Rep Lead. This letter was also published in the Quincy Sun most recently. The Quincy Citywide PTO has steadfastly supported the request of our Asian American families to recognize Lunar New Year as an official school holiday in QPS. According to DESI in 2023, 40% of our student population is of Asian heritage, which makes this ongoing decision not to honor Lunar New Year as a holiday deeply disheartening. For three years, Asian American families and students have passionately advocated in front of the school committee, only to face repeated rejection. Lunar New Year is the most significant cultural holiday for many Asian families, marked by travel, months of preparation, and celebrations that bring loved ones together. Historically, as presented at the March 13, 2024, school committee meeting, our schools have observed low attendance on this day, reflecting the importance of the holiday to our community. By declaring Lunar New Year a school holiday, QPS would demonstrate respect for the culture and traditions of a significant portion of its student body and their families. We thank school committee member Courtney Perdias, the Quincy City Council, and Mayor Koch for their unwavering support of this effort. The time has come for all members of the Quincy School Committee to show that they care about and understand the diverse school community they serve. We implore the committee to declare Lunar New Year a school holiday in the QPS calendar of 2025 to 2026. Thank you for your time.
Shivpreet Singh, 511 Hancock Street. Before I start, I'll give a brief about me. I come from a micro minority in India, which is 2% of the Indian population and 0.38% of the world population. We really don't have any holiday of our own, and we love to celebrate everybody's holidays, and we think that it builds a lot of community and fosters a lot of brotherhood. So I am also here today for the third consecutive year in support of the QPS Asian American families advocating for the inclusion of Lunar New Year as a recognized holiday on the school calendar. This request has received unanimous support from the City Council and over 40% of the Quincy community. Cultural celebrations such as festivals play an important role in fostering a sense of community. They create easy opportunities for people to share and honor each other's traditions, promoting understanding and mutual respect. It is in this spirit that I ask the school committee to reconsider its stance on Lunar New Year in a way that it reflects the demographic of our community. One argument that has been raised against this request is that recognizing Lunar New Year would be inequitable to other festivals. However, this argument only holds if we are to assume that all festivals are treated equally. That would be absolutely true if Christmas was an excused absence, which will never be the case. Hence, being sensitive to our demographic, we should make effort to be ingeniously inclusive instead of being rigidly focused on the definition of equity. Another point raised is that not having Lunar New Year as a holiday is that it's important for education of students. Do I understand it that Asian American families are being asked to choose between their festival and their child's education? I apologize in advance if I misunderstood that. Further comparing Quincy to districts like Malden that do not observe Lunar New Year while overlooking those like Hopkinton that do may lead to an incomplete understanding of how other districts are approaching the issue of honoring the diverse community. Lastly, the argument that recognizing Lunar New Year as a holiday is a political issue is concerning, that parents advocating for this holiday have no political affiliations. They are simply requesting that their traditions be recognized and respected by the school system. To portray this as a political matter undermines the sincerity of the request and distracts from the genuine desire for cultural inclusion. In conclusion, the current position of the school committee risks creating a perception that the decision has already been made with arguments crafted to justify it. This undermines trust and gives the impression that all families don't feel heard or respected or equally valued by the school system. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name is Amy Sorensen-Alawad. I live at 3 Rude Street, and I have two children in Quincy Public Schools. I'm here again as an ally to Quincy's Asian families in support of Lunar New Year. Like you and those in this room, I have considered the facts and data on this topic. At the core of what those numbers represent are the Asian people in our community. They are my reason for being here. They are why Lunar New Year is important to me and why I will continue to advocate for it as an observed holiday on our school calendar. I'm here tonight because I believe my Asian friends and neighbors. I believe all of the Asian people in our community when they tell us that Lunar New Year is of cultural and historical and familial significance to them. I believe them because the desire to add Lunar New Year to the calendar clearly comes from a deeply authentic place that stems from the family and cultural traditions that have been passed down to them from their ancestors for 3,000 years. We're not talking about a passing trend. The depth of this holiday and its significance is something I won't understand as a white person from the South Shore of Massachusetts, but what I can do is believe and support them in their right to experience equitable treatment from this committee and from our city. Now, it's up to you, members of the school committee, to decide what and who you believe in and value. Will you utilize the flexibility allowed to you as a school committee and show that you also believe, value, and support your Asian friends and neighbors and community members by adding Lunar New Year to the school calendar? A decision to add it will represent the commitment this committee has spoken of when you've discussed the importance of equity, diversity, and inclusion in the Quincy Public School System. You have talked the talk, and now you are being asked to walk the walk. Will you shift from the place and position you've held in favor of priorities that reflect the current times, current demographics of this city and of our school system? As members of this committee, you have the capacity to address this issue and engage with us, your constituents, in this moment. You can rise to the occasion and show the leadership and the foresight that this moment demands. You can show us that you recognize and value the Asian people who live and belong here in Quincy by leading with equity and adding Lunar New Year to the school calendar. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Kate Campbell. I live at 37 Cranch Street, and this is the fourth year that I've been working to get Lunar New Year on the school calendar. Every year, I get excited and start thinking that maybe the members of the school committee have done some reflection and will finally recognize the culturally responsive thing to do. Our group gets louder, more people get involved, we provide more signatures, community involvement gets stronger, and yet it appears to fall on deaf ears. This year, it was striking to hear committee members say right off the bat at a subcommittee that they were not interested in moving forward and having additional conversation about Lunar New Year, that the calendar they proposed was based on being an educational calendar, meaning offering the students of Quincy the strongest education possible based on the dates the students were in school. My immediate reaction was confusion. Has the school committee really convinced themselves that a calendar with Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving, but not Lunar New Year says, hey, look how strong our calendar is and how much it reflects the educational needs of the students of Quincy? Or is this just another example of the school committee ignoring the cultural needs of the community they serve and digging their heels in deeper because of last year's embarrassment by City Council, recognizing the cultural appropriateness of making Lunar New Year a school holiday? In my work, I generally go by the principle, assume good intentions. When it comes to how committee members have voted on this issue, unfortunately, I think until the membership of the school committee reflects the population of Quincy, this will not change. It has become clear that some members of the Quincy School Committee have made the decision not to align themselves with the community and students that they were elected to serve. Thank you.
Good evening, members of Quincy School Committee. My name is Tui Leung. I live on Huntley Street, Huntley Row, and I have three children in the Quincy Public School System. I'm here to ask, why hasn't Quincy recognized Lunar New Year as a school holiday? This holiday is celebrated by 2 billion people worldwide. It's deeply rooted in tradition, family, and identity. In Quincy, where 40% of our students are Asian, this isn't just a cultural celebration. It's a reflection of who they are. Yet, after three years of advocacy and overwhelming community support, this committee continued to resist. Why? At one point, a school committee member suggested this issue to be taken up with the city. So we did exactly that. We sent hundreds of emails and called every city councillor, the mayor, and all the city councillor unanimously voted to recognize Lunar New Year, showing leadership and solidarity with our community. Yet, this committee then dismissed that effort, arguing that it wasn't within the city authority to change the school calendar. To me, this feels like a deliberate tactic, a merry-go-round to delays, of delays and excuses that dismisses and disrespect our community. I've been told. So if a 40% Asian student population isn't enough to warrant a change, I ask you, at what percentage is adequate? 50%? 60%? 70%? Are we waiting for the community to be so large that it can no longer be ignored? By then, the damage will already be done, sending the message that their heritage was only worth honoring when. Sorry. By then, the damage will already be done, sending a message that their heritage was only worth honoring when it became politically convenient. This resistance raises serious and uncomfortable questions. Is it an unwillingness to embrace the growing Asian community in Quincy? Is it easier to maintain status quo than to celebrate the heritage of nearly half of our students, whatever the reason, it is unacceptable? I urge the committee to take a deep reflection on why your action remains so out of touch with the reality of the Quincy population. Refusing to recognize Lunar New Year sends a harmful message that Asian students and their families are not valued. It's hurtful, divisive, and wrong. So if cities like Brookline, Hopkinton, and Wayland with much smaller Asian population can honor this day, why can't Quincy? The mayor, the city council, City YPTO, and community has spoken. Now it's time for this committee to stop making excuses and align its action to the values of inclusion and respect. Let's show every student in Quincy that their heritage matter, and let's make Lunar New Year a school holiday. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Move on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. First item on the agenda is our staff recognition of Senior Director of Human Resources, Allison Cox, who will be leaving us at the end of the month. Enjoying her just retirement. So, good evening. It is an honor for me to recognize and celebrate the remarkable career of our friend and colleague, Allison Cox, whose dedication and commitment to education, our community, and our students have left an indelible mark on the Quincy Public Schools. For over 31 years, Allison has been a steadfast advocate for students, families, and staff, and she has devoted her career to improving the lives of everyone in the Quincy School Community. From her early days as an elementary school teacher, primarily at the Moncler Elementary School, which Allison loves, to her recent role as the Senior Director of Human Resources, Allison has demonstrated resolute commitment to the core values of education, fostering growth, supporting each individual, and ensuring that every child has the opportunity to succeed. Her tenure as the president of the Quincy Education Association further exemplified her leadership and her ability to bring together educators to create positive change. She was always a voice for teachers, working to ensure they had the resources, support, and respect they deserved, while also keeping the needs of the students at the forefront of every decision. But perhaps one of the most telling aspects of Allison's career is her deep commitment to community, particularly this community. Prior to joining the Quincy Public Schools, she was actively involved as the PTO president at Parker Elementary School, where her children attended. It was there that Allison first demonstrated her dedication to making a difference, rallying parents and families to support the school and its initiatives. It was a natural extension of her passion for children's education and the vital role that family involvement plays in a child's academic journey. Allison is also a longstanding member of the Quincy Historical Society, which fits in perfectly with her love of history and genealogy as well. As a Senior Director of Human Resources, Allison played a pivotal role in shaping the department, ensuring that Quincy Public Schools attracted, retained, and supported the very best educators and staff. Her approach has always been student-centered, knowing that the strength of the staff directly impacts the success of our students. Her leadership, empathy, and commitment to creating an inclusive, supportive environment for both students and staff are truly second to none. Allison's impact on Quincy Public Schools is beyond measure, but it is her genuine care for the students, staff, and families that make her legacy truly exceptional. She has always been there for others, both personally and professionally, working tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure everyone has the support they need to succeed. Her unwavering dedication to making Quincy a better place for all is something we can all admire and aspire to, and I certainly do. Allison, thank you for your 31 years of service, 31-plus years of service, your leadership, your friendship, and your steadfast dedication to the Quincy Public Schools and its community. You have touched countless lives, as you know, and your legacy will continue to inspire future generations of educators and leaders all very much in this room. We are ready, and of course, we are already seeing that as we hire your former students as educators, and many of those have come across your desk recently as new educators for the Quincy Public Schools, which is great. So in conclusion, let us all join in honoring and celebrating Allison Cox, an educator, a leader, a great friend, and a true advocate to the Quincy community. Allison, thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor. Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add a couple of words, if I might, to outstanding description by Kevin of your tenure here in our city. We were on opposite sides of the table for a number of years, but I never saw anything but respect, thoughtful proposals and responses, never personal. You carried the weight of the membership, clearly, and I know that isn't easy, trying to keep everybody happy in all we do, particularly in union leadership. Your leadership on the employee benefit side with the health insurance. You're a big part of that decision and winning over the other unions for all the right reasons to go the way we did. I'll miss those conversations about education. I'll miss those conversations about the value of MCAS or other tests, and certainly all of those other conversations about public education, the importance of what it means to community. So I was so glad when you joined the team here, and it's not easy to follow the footsteps because the superintendent held that spot at one time, so I'm sure that was not easy and led to some interesting discussions. But you've, in every position, every role, and I'm sure your favorite role was the kids at Moncler, but you did it with class, you did it with dignity, and you did it with grace. And I want to thank you. I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to add one thing. Everything I've heard is absolutely true about you, and you've been a friend to our community and helped raise our children, all of our children, for so many years. But one of the things that I think has been so great since you've been in HR is the onboarding and the support that you give to teachers when they come in, and that has been paramount. Our retention of educators has been incredible, especially through the pandemic and after the pandemic, when all these other districts were having trouble keeping staff. We had no trouble with it at all. So I just want to thank you so much for that. That's so important to help us maintain the staff, that you make sure that they're supported, both in the QEA and in the HR office. So thank you very much.
Mr. Gattro.
Thank you. I'm going to echo everything that was said, Allison. And, you know, for the years that you headed QEA, I was a fan, but for the last seven years on the school committee, I am a believer. You know, you have the institutional memory that's going to walk out the door, the professionalism that you have. You know, probably one of the most enriching experiences was the 22 sessions that we had negotiating with QEA. It was very eye-opening for me. But you, your attention to detail, the notes that you took, your ability to work across the aisle, so to speak, it's going to be a big loss for the city. So I wish you well, and you'll be missed in a big way. Thank you.
Ms. Alseth? Mr. Begone?
I don't know how I'm going to replace you. I tried to talk you out of it, but you're not listening. I know we tried. Just a real professional educator, from the time she walked in the door at Moncler, which I know if you had an opportunity to go back, you'd go back in a heartbeat. She never, in all negotiations, never heard anything personal about anything. It was always what was right for the school system and for the union. So I'm going to miss you and become a friend and confidant. Again, I don't know how I'm going to replace you, but good luck. Thank you.
Is anybody crying? No? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Alseth? Thanks again, Allison. Congratulations. Next is student recognitions. Congratulations to the winners of the annual Quincy Sun Christmas poster contest. The winners, the winning students were invited to ride on a float in the recent Quincy Christmas Parade, and their posters are displayed in the windows of the Quincy Sun offices on Hancock Street. So for grades 1 to 3, Eunice Wu from Wallaston in grade 1 won the first prize. Congratulations, Eunice. Anav Gauda from Merrymount in grade 3 student won the third place prize. So congratulations, Anav. And for grade 4 to 5, Prajna Singh from Clifford Marshall, grade 4, won first prize. Congratulations. And Elliot Martinez from Bernazani, grade 5, won second prize. Chastity Ty from Lincoln Hancock, grade 4, won third prize. Again, congratulations to all of these students. You make us very proud. And please take a moment, if you can, when you're passing through Quincy Center to take a look in the windows at the Quincy Sun, and you can see the work of these amazing students. Again, congratulations. Next is the Quincy, North Quincy Band and Color Guard. At the city of Quincy's recent Christmas parade, 10 bands competed in three separate divisions. The QNQ band took best percussion, best music, and first place in Division 3. The students also won best overall band for the fourth year in a row with a historic score of 97.4. Congratulations to the QNQ Band and Color Guard on this incredible achievement, and their awards just keep adding up with every event they participate in. So I can't congratulate them enough and, of course, thank their band leaders and instructors for this, another great achievement. Another North Quincy, shout out. North Quincy High School is going to be participating again this year in the quiz show. North made it through the preliminary round, where 16 high school teams competed. They are scheduled to compete in the next round on January 25. And of course, best of luck to North Quincy Quiz Show team. I'll keep you updated on their progress. I'm hoping that they will win again this year. It's a great team. This past Saturday, the robotics team from all of our middle schools competed in the first Lego League regional qualifier. Congratulations to the Point Webster. Congratulations to the Point Webster Astralla Team, who finished in the top 10 and was awarded first place in Core Values. The team will compete again this Saturday at the first Lego League Challenge on Massachusetts' East Championships, and we are proud of all of our students for their hard work and teamwork, as well as our incredible program staff and volunteers for their dedication. Again, best of luck to the Quincy team. On Monday, December 16th, administrators from Waymouth Public Schools, including interim Superintendent Melanie Curtain, will visit the Early College High School Program at North Quincy High School. Waymouth High School is interested in joining the Early College High School Network and wanted to see firsthand how Quincy Public Schools' collaboration with Quincy College has led to the successful implementation of the program. And the next is upcoming Quincy Public Schools events include the following. North Quincy High School's Drama Club is presenting Little Women on December 13th at 7:00 p.m., December 14th at 2:00 and 7:00 p.m., and December 15th at 2:00 p.m., all in the Peter Crism Auditorium at North Quincy High School. Winter concerts are now scheduled for all schools, some in December and after the return to school from winter break in January. A complete schedule was shared with school committee and their packets and calendar invitations sent out for the evening events. And there will be a parent academy to meet the Behavioral Health Navigator and an Aspire Health Clinician from Quincy and North Quincy High School on January 7th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom, and that's so that as many parents can access it as possible. Lastly, I wanted to end tonight's superintendent's report with special thanks to some longtime supporters of the Quincy Public Schools and its students. Under the consent agenda, you will be approving gifts from Uncle Sam Roundsville, who once again donated tickets for students at Southwest Middle School to see a performance of A Christmas Carol. And also, you'll see the seaside stitchers, Pearl Jim, the Quincy Garden Club, and individual knitters for the annual donation of handcrafted hats, mittens, and scarves for our students. We are so thankful for the ongoing thoughtfulness of these donors and their dedication to our students year in and year out. And with that, that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have superintendent's evaluation by Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets is the composite summative evaluation form for the Superintendent Mulvey School Year 2023 to 2024. The superintendent was evaluated as having met his goals and received an O R rating of proficient with exemplary ratings for standards related to law, ethics, policies, and fiscal systems. Appreciate you all completing your individual evaluations, your thoughtful comments. It'll be helpful as the superintendent finalizes his goal for the 2024-2025 goals, I should say, school year. The new goals will be discussed at the January 29th Teaching and Learning Subcommittee.
Motion to approve, accept. Mrs. Lebo, second by Mrs. Hubley. Is it roll call or just? Roll call, vote to accept.
I just, did anyone else get this sooner than tonight? I just haven't had a chance to read all the comments, and I'm wondering if we could just hang off on voting and just until we've all had a chance to read the composite comments together so that we kind of know what we're voting on. I just haven't had a chance to read the words because they were just at our spot when we came in today. I didn't know if anyone would second the motion to hang off on voting.
It's essentially a summary of what was submitted by each member, so nothing changes from it.
But we have to vote to approve the whole thing. And I just haven't read.
Approving the summary.
Right. I just haven't read the comments, I haven't read all the comments. I'm sure I probably would agree with them, but I just haven't read it, so I don't, I can certainly abstain. But I'd rather vote, you know, to support it. I just need, you know, a half an hour with it.
There's nothing in there that you're going to change, though. Everybody's comments are their comments, and so everything got put in there. So you can, you can only disagree with your own comments. So if there's something in there that you put in that you disagreed with, that would be your own comment, because you can't change anybody else's comment.
Right. Yeah, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't. I wouldn't propose any changes. I'm just saying, I feel uncomfortable voting to accept something that I just haven't fully read. And like I say, I feel uncomfortable doing that because I'd like to give the superintendent and his team, who work super hard, the, you know, the value of my support and my vote too. I just, I just haven't read it and just kind of at the core of it, I don't feel comfortable not having read the words. So I would just appreciate if we could hold off, you know, until the next meeting, just till we all have had a chance to read all the words, just to make sure that what I'm voting on, you know, I'm, because if I didn't agree with something, right, so then I could just not. I wouldn't amend it, in other words, right?
Well, you can abstain if you want from voting on it if you didn't have time.
Okay. Like I say, if no one else would second the motion, then that is probably what I would do.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiós.
I'm staying.
Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
New business. Special Education Program Improvement Plan by Mrs. Graham, Ms. Leary, Ms. Carey, Ms. Sean Ionetta, I don't know if I said that right, and Ms. Karanis. I think you're all set. Is that on? Yes.
Sure.
Good.
Thank you, Mrs. Cahill. Good evening, Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, and members of the committee. Thank you for having us here this evening to present the 2024-2025 Special Education Program Improvement Plan. The Quincy Public Schools Special Education Team has the privilege of helping students with unique abilities, struggles, and achievement levels to reach their full academic potential. We are committed to providing all students, especially our most vulnerable students, with the access to high-quality educational opportunities and high academic expectations to ensure greater equity in educational outcomes. We recognize that each student we work with has individual academic abilities and achievement levels, as well as strengths and needs. In addition to providing high-quality educational opportunities, the Special Education Team is also committed to ensuring that all of our students are awarded the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities. Students with disabilities participate in after-school clubs and sports at their home schools. Transportation and additional supports are provided when necessary and identified in a student's IEP. Some examples of these are soccer at Snug Harbor, drama club at Central Middle School, the Taylor Swift Club at Southwest, and the swim team at North Quincy High School. Through our partnership with Sing Explore Create, students are offered the opportunity to participate in afternoon and vacation week camps and creative art groups. As you can see by the picture on the front of this plan and the appendix, page 60, the students in the Learning Center at North Quincy High School have recently completed their inaugural season of the United Basketball Team, excuse me, the Unified Basketball Team. The Special Education Team is incredibly grateful to Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, and this committee to your ongoing support in bringing the vision of the Dr. Richter Christopher Learning Center to fruition. The dedicated members of the RDLC Planning Team, which included myself, Dr. Perkins, Kerry Conley, Simone Buckley, Jen Leary, classroom teachers, related service providers, members of our community, and members of our CPAC Board, were beyond excited in September when the Richter Christopher Learning Center opened its doors as a new school site for the Quincy Public Schools. The RDLC is a public day school that offers Quincy Public School students, who require a high level of support and services, the opportunity to receive those supports in their community, yes, right here within Quincy. The Special Education Team is supported by Special Education Coordinator Jen Leary, Team Administrators Lisa Chan Ionetta, Catherine Carey, and Jill Karanis, who work with our schools in district as well as assisting with our out-of-district students. We currently serve over 2,000 students within our integrated pre-K classes, resource rooms, substantially separate classes, inclusion settings, alternative programs, and out-of-district placements. In addition, the Special Education Team recognized that our students, families, and caregivers are valuable partners and helps to create a rich educational experience for all of our students. Quincy Public Schools has an active Special Education Parent Advisory Council, whose members meet quarterly with the Special Education Subcommittee, as well as monthly for support and informational workshops. The Special Education Team is proud of the work that we have completed during the 2023-2024 school year and are thrilled to share with you our goals for the 2024-2025 year. We will begin with the reflections from this past year on page seven. The goal for all special education teachers in 2023-2024 was to participate in the IEP Improvement Project trainings. The special education teachers participated in a minimum of three training sessions. By April, teachers began to utilize the new form for the initial evaluations, but were unable to use the form for reevaluations due to the limitations of the Aspen platform, which has since been rectified. Special education teachers were offered the opportunity to participate in additional trainings during the summer.
Thank you. Good evening. On page seven, during the 2023-2024 school year, the CARES and Learning Center teams participated in the scheduled trainings to further understand and expand on the implementation of the Pivotal Response Treatment that targets pivotal areas of a child's development, such as motivation, responsiveness to multiple cues, self-management, and social initiations. This ongoing collaboration provided teaching professionals with the opportunity to collaborate, share, and create data collection materials to further drive the evidence needed for each goal and objective identified on a student's IEP.
The goal of the post-secondary team Quincy College LEAP program was to continue to support and work on developing a peer-mentor program with the support of Quincy College, with the goal of having at least five Quincy College students engage in their mentor program. During the 23-24 school year, two Quincy College students participated in a chill club with students from the LEAP program. Although this goal was not met, the team will continue to build the mentoring program and have started a sports trivia group this year, with the goal of continuing to build upon peer relationships.
Also on page eight, during the 23-24 school year, the language development classes took part in the Core Knowledge Language Arts trainings. The teachers met monthly with general education teachers around the implementation and alignment following the scope and sequence of the CKLA comprehensive literacy curriculum. Based on monthly meetings, the LDC team determined best practices, they made appropriate modifications to the program and also differentiated instruction for all students with language-based learning disabilities in the LDC program. Although this goal was met, the LDC team will continue to work on integrating the scope and sequence of CKLA.
Also on page eight, you can see that during the 2023-2024 school year, the goals program successfully expanded their course offerings beyond the four core subjects by implementing a new business course. This course incorporates skills such as personal finance, financial literacy, and career readiness as it relates to general life skills. Students were introduced to resume writing, interviewing skills, managing personal finances, and budgeting. Through targeted lessons, students were able to enhance their knowledge of real-life scenarios specific to the process of applying for jobs, budgeting a paycheck, and obtaining housing or vehicle. Students researched the cost of rent for an apartment in Quincy and surrounding cities and towns, the cost of car payment, the cost of groceries, all while working within the confines of a mock monthly salary. Students also participated in mock and real-life interviews, both virtually and in person, learned the skill of tying a tie, and created posters demonstrating appropriate dress attire for an interview. Additionally, students had the opportunity to attend coordinated informational sessions with the CVTE Union Liaison as a means of exploring other employment opportunities, as well as researching course offerings in the application process at Quincy College. Lastly, students utilized all these resources and teachings in drafting attainable and realistic goals for themselves.
On page nine, our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists worked on developing strengths-based SMART goals for the students on their caseloads. One of the focuses of the new IEP format is on ensuring that goals are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely. The new present levels of performance pages for communication and other areas, including PT and OT, include a section on student strengths relative to those areas. The related service providers attended several training sessions on the new IEP, which included information on focusing on student strengths to help write appropriate SMART goals. Excuse me. Also on page nine, the Behavior Support Team, including District BCBAs, provided 12 hours of professional development for all District Paraprofessionals. The topics included educational disability categories, accommodations versus modifications, functions of behaviors, data collection, and how to intervene with challenging behaviors. Additionally, the BCBAs provided supervision to 14 paraprofessionals who were seeking to become registered behavior technicians.
On page 10, you'll see that to support the goal of the special education teachers, the Special Education Team provided ongoing training for the new IEP Improvement Project. Training was offered during Professional Development Days, April School Vacation, and in the month of August. Training has continued into the 2024-2025 school year with any new staff or those that may need to continue with supports. Also on page 10, you'll see that the goal of the Richter Christopher Learning Center Design Team was to take the necessary steps to complete the initial application for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education approval of a Massachusetts Public Day School Special Education Program, as evidenced by the successful submission of the application in May 2024. The RDLC Design Team met monthly to take the necessary steps to complete the initial application. Each month, the team focused on sections of the application to complete and to send to our DZ liaison for feedback. In May 2024, the initial application was submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and on August 1st, 2024, we received our notice of full approval for the opening of the Richter Christopher Learning Center. In September 2024, the RDLC welcomed 45 students in grades K through 8 for the first time. As you can see on page 11, the Special Education Team worked closely with our CPAC to support their events, such as trunk retreat, gingerbread house night, crafty and sensory play, and they added a new event this year as a big end-of-year celebration, which is a huge success. The team continues to work in collaboration with the CPAC to provide after-school, vacation, and summer activities with Sing Explore Create. Starting on page 15, we will now share our goals for the 2024-2025 school year. To further our work from last year, by June 2025, all elementary, middle, and high school special education teachers will utilize the new IEP form for 100% of their initial review and reevaluation IEPs. On page 16, you will see that the post-secondary team at Quincy College LEAP program will expand its volunteer sites from 7 to 11 by adding an additional four sites for enrolled students, and expanding its part-time employment sites from two to three by adding one additional site. As you can see by the action steps, Quincy College LEAP staff will be working alongside Partners for Youth with Disabilities in Randolph Public Schools, through the Liberty Mutual Foundation Impact Driven Collaboration Goal, to participate in a needs assessment to identify barriers to educational opportunities and gaps in preparing youth with disabilities to successfully enter the workplace. This is an exciting opportunity to work within our community and with other local agencies to strengthen and increase the pipeline of students with disabilities who are ready to enter both community college and/or the workforce.
On page 17, during the 24-25 school year, the language development classes will continue to monitor their work from the 23-24 school year. By monitoring the effectiveness of the aligned scope and sequence of Core Knowledge Language Arts Comprehensive Literacy Curriculum, the team will do so with best teaching practices for supporting students with language-based learning disabilities. They will continue to meet monthly and also analyze student data at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. Necessary adjustments will be made to meet individual needs of each student. Necessary adjustments will be made to meet individual needs of each student. Next, on page 18, during the 2024-2025 school year, the CARES and Special needs Learning Center Team will create and utilize a series of data collection tools that will more uniformly align with the new IEP form. The data collection process will be used as the foundation for the goals and objectives proposed on each student's IEP.
On page 19, during the 2024-2025 school year, the Goals Program will improve their program's daily attendance by increasing student attendance from 60% to 70%. This goal aligns with the district goal of addressing chronic absenteeism. The Goals Team will meet monthly with each student to review their individual attendance goal and to address barriers to consistent attendance.
On page 20, you will see that the Related Service Providers will continue to expand their goal-writing skills. In October 2024, they attended a training on the Collaborative IEP Process, Goal Development, and the New Massachusetts IEP, which focused on developing goals that targets a student's functional and/or academic skills to support their participation in all aspects of the school day. Throughout the school year, the Related Service Providers will use tools to analyze their current goals and ensure that new goals they write are focused on school-based functional and/or academic skills. On page 21, the Behavior Support Team will continue their goal of supporting district paraprofessionals by providing professional development sessions focused on understanding and supporting students with autism, setting a strong foundation, and data collection tools. The district BCBAs will continue to provide supervision to any paraprofessionals who are participating in the Registered Behavior Technician Course.
On page 22, you'll see that in response to the findings of last year's DZ-tiered-focused monitoring review, the Special Education Team will develop an action plan and progress monitoring plan to address the overall inclusion rates of students found eligible for special education services. The long-term goal of this team is to move Quincy Public Schools students closer to the state average rates for full inclusion and partial inclusion. Our final goal can be found on page 23. This goal is to work with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council and is a continuing goal from previous years. Although we have increased over the past few years, we will continue to work closely with the CPAC to increase family engagement. The Special Education Team is proud of the work that we have accomplished last year, and we look forward to implementing the 2024-2025 Special Education Program Improvement Plan. At this time, we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. This was great reading. Reminded me of what everybody was doing out there again, so it was really good. I have a couple of just observations. It seems like at the elementary level, we have more kids with disabilities than in most of the schools than we've had before, and less at the middle school. Does that seem right to you?
It does. It does.
Are we just capturing kids earlier with our assessments?
We are absolutely capturing students earlier, but we are also experiencing a number of students that have moved into the district that have previously been identified as needing special education services.
Okay, yeah. Another one, special learning disabilities still drives me crazy. Why don't they just call it what it is? I would like them to stop calling dyslexia dyslexia. I think this is a disservice to whoever a child who has it, and I just don't know why they don't do it. It's not on you, but it really does frustrate me. I love the Partners for Youth Development Plan.
It's exciting.
Wonderful, really wonderful. And I think the goal for goals to increase the attendance, that's going to be a hard one. It's going to be a hard nut, but it would be nice if we could find a way. I think as we develop more of those courses, it might be more enticing to them. That might help, and also maybe moving them into the community a little bit more and moving them into North Quincy. A question, are they counted in North Quincy's special education students, the goal students?
I believe so. No, they're separate.
They go to their home school? Okay, thank you. The new IEP, so is it lining with Aspen now? So you're going to be able to do all of that?
It is. It is. There were a couple of glitches that Mr. Pacho had to work through last year because at that time, we were still working off of two forms, so things were not lining up as well as we thought they would initially. But thankfully, Dan took some time this summer and has aligned everything beautifully for us, and we're getting there.
And now you have to find new ways to collect your data, though, so that will align. So I noticed that throughout the plan, too. There's always something else you have to do, so. I just want to thank you all. I think the increasing full inclusion would be a nice goal.
Absolutely.
It's also a hard nut to do, but I think it's a great goal. And I just, very, very thorough plan. I really appreciate it. And so just thank you all for your work, and thank you to all the special education teachers. They are special.
Incredible. They absolutely are. Yep.
Thank you.
We're very lucky.
Mrs. Hubley? Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for the plan. I totally agree with Mrs. Lebo. I hate that it doesn't say dyslexia in here. It should. My other question with the demographics of student population is the vision hearing. I dislike that it is a vision slash hearing. I really would like it to be two separate lines, and I understand that some children have both, and that could be represented there. But I see that for 2024, it says there are only 10 children that have vision slash hearing. Is there any way we can know how many of them are which, and how many of them are vision, how many are hearing?
Absolutely.
It'd be good to know. If we could get that emailed, I'm expecting to know off the top. But if you could get that emailed to us, that would be good information to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. So I know at least one of the elementary school PIPS mentioned a dyslexia screening tool. And so can you just, because I don't know anything about it, is it universal? Is it a certain age? Is it child-specific? Is it, you know, Massachusetts or nationwide, a tool that all school systems use? How does that work?
So it's part of the Amplify M class, that there is a dyslexia screening tool that is built into that screening. So if there are students that come through that screening that are seen as potentially being at risk for dyslexia, there are tiered interventions that we can provide as early as possible, as soon as they're identified.
And is that unique to our district, or do you think it's pretty universal across districts?
Is it universal?
It's part of the state regulations.
Oh, it's a regulation in the state that requires... Oh, that's fascinating. Okay. Second question, completely unrelated. What was the staff when Aspen around the forms last year?
Sure, sure. So when students are, every three years, their IEPs are reevaluated for special education eligibility, and the forms just weren't lining up because we were carrying over old forms onto new forms, and it just was not as seamless as we had hoped. So for students that were being reevaluated, it was taking multiple hours to input all of that new data. So we pretty quickly recognized that that was not a good use of staff time and opted to hold off on reevaluations using the new form until September to all of the kinks were worked out.
And so how did you work out the kinks in Aspen?
It was just a matter of closing out the old forms and using the new forms.
Understood.
Once we knew what it was, it was actually quite simple. It was just, it wasn't lining up the way that Mr. Pacho had hoped that it would. It was completely an Aspen platform issue, not a Quincy Public Schools issue.
Yeah, got it. I don't have any further questions. I thought the plan was detailed and terrific. And great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Similar, I thought the plan was very thorough and comprehensive, and I thought there were a lot of great things in there, so I appreciate that. I do have a couple of comments and questions, and I'm kind of going to take a little time on this because as the chair of the Special Ed Subcommittee, I would normally have kind of had more of an item on the agenda for this, so I just wanted to ask a couple of things. I did look to CPAC as well, to reach out to them, to make sure, you know, their concerns as well were heard in here. So I just wanted to start my comments with the appendix sections. I just had a question on page 26 on the staffing. Is this across all QPS schools? It's not just the RDLC, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to...
We incorporated the RDLC as part of it.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you for that. So that was just a quick question. I found the descriptions of the programs extremely helpful. It's hard to keep them all straight. It's hard to understand, to remember which one, what grade levels are at which one, and the differences between them. So I found that description very helpful. I was wondering, is that on our website anywhere?
It is.
It is. Okay, great. So parents can see that as well. That's fantastic. The Unified Basketball League, great, really great opportunity.
They actually have their application in to do a unified track and field for the spring.
That's fantastic. That's really, really great. The Liberty Mutual Grant sounded fantastic, and definitely, I think, something that could help out the LEAP program. And so in just those kids trying to expand opportunities, so that, those were great things in the appendix that I read. And then just going back to the plan, just to go page, not page by page, but just in order by pages. Page 12 on the MCAS results, is that the alternative MCAS, the portfolio?
It is for all children with disabilities in the district. It's not broken out by any one particular subset.
Okay, so it's both together?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't realize that they combined them, that, so that they are combined, though?
To get the results. So it's all students with disabilities.
Okay, all right. So that's a mix of both. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Page 15, have all special ed teachers now been trained on the new IEP form? Said that that was a goal by November. Just wanted to...
Yes.
That has? Okay, that's fantastic. Really, really great, just to be sure everybody's...
I have to say kudos to this team because they were phenomenal in getting any of our new staff, anybody that may have missed trainings at the end of last year, to really get them up to speed because per the state of Massachusetts, by November, we don't have an option to use the old form. So we had to get everybody up and running, and this team has been fantastic.
I know you provided a couple of different, many different training opportunities, so thank you for doing that. I think that's very important. I love the idea of a staff survey on the IEP form and just making, like, understanding what the challenges are that staff are facing, so I love that idea as well. Page 16 on the LEAP goal. So I'm wondering if, so we have four new volunteer sites and one new work site. Is there a list somewhere of the companies that, of those 14 companies or businesses that...
I could get that list for you. Susannah Freel at the college would have that.
Yeah, I would love that. Basically, I just, my kind of question about that is, my concern about that is, are we kind of following up with these kiddos in these positions to make sure that their goal after they leave the LEAP program, that they're not just busy work, right? That these are actual meaningful jobs that are teaching those kids the skills that they could have to be employable after the LEAP program?
They are.
And not just, you know, something that might just not, not go toward their goals, might just be kind of busy work.
The team works together to identify which sites we do have and which sites do line up with those student goals.
Okay. And have we thought about, I know that we had January to May, excuse me, as an action step to working with the Quincy Chamber of Commerce. Should that be more ongoing, or is that more ongoing than just what that might lead to?
Definitely more ongoing, but we tend to let the, kind of the dust settle in the fall and then, you know, reuse some of our older sites, but really add new sites every spring. You know, we work with Mr. Cahill and his team, and they've been wonderful to work with us and added a couple of new sites each year as a result of that.
It's really fantastic. I'm just, you know, kind of brainstorming ways we can even add more. I know Mr. Segala and Ms. Early with the School Community Partnership. Is that something you explore as well?
We have. We've actually had some of our students that have started using those sites as well. The challenge is, you know, we want to make sure that our students can be there as independently as possible, so there is a lot of legwork that goes into it. But we are working hard every year to continue to build those sites.
Yeah, I love that. And I love the partnership that the LEAP program has with North Quincy, and I understand the proximity, but I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to expand that to partner with Quincy High as well, or if there's any, any way that Quincy High students could also be part of that. I know you didn't quite hit that goal of the number of peers you were looking for, nor...
Sure, sure.
But if there was any opportunity to kind of add Quincy High to that mix, because I think it's a great partnership between those students.
Yep. So the LEAP students are, that I was speaking about, are the ones that are actually at Quincy College.
Oh, okay.
So they're not students that are at Quincy High School.
Got you. Got you. Okay. Sorry about that. Probably misread that. And just a couple more, I promise. It would be helpful to know, so when we were looking at the SIP plans, a lot of the action steps kind of listed, I think there was a new column this year, like new revised or continued goals, or action steps, rather. That would be super helpful, like, moving forward, if we could have that as well. It would just kind of help me kind of focus on what's new about it. The CPAC goal, I'm a little uncomfortable with us, with the wording of the CPAC goal. And after kind of speaking with CPAC, I'm not, I feel like they're similar in their thoughts on this, that the way the CPAC goal is worded is "The CPAC will continue to work closely with the Special Education Team during the school year to increase parent engagement through participation in CPAC-sponsored meeting and events by adding at least one additional community event." I feel like that goal is giving the CPAC orders, sort of, or expectations, and I think as a parent group, that's not something that I'm super comfortable with. I'd rather it be worded, "The Special Education Team will work with CPAC to improve parent, to increase parent engagement." That would make me a little bit more comfortable because, yeah, I just, I don't really like giving volunteer parents goals that they need to meet. That's something that we're expecting them to do. They do this work, you know, which is crazy, above and beyond what they have with dealing with their own children with special needs. So I'd feel a little more comfortable, kind of maybe moving forward, just kind of changing the wording of that goal, just in the way that we're partnering with CPAC on that. But the responsibility sort of lies with your team instead of with them, if that makes sense, just the wording. And is there a long-term goal to set, is there a long-term plan to set as a goal the number of students meeting their stated IEP goals for the year? So they're creating, on the new IEP form, they're creating goals, and there was a goal in here on creating SMART goals, and OT has, you know, specific goals now. Is there kind of a long-term look ahead that we're going to be setting as a goal the number of students meeting that as a, you know, an accountability measure?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. So when IEP goals are written, they are written to be achieved in one year.
Right.
So our goal is always 100%. I can't say we always get to 100%, but I would say between the goals and each actionable objective under it, that is the goal for every year, is for those students to meet them.
Right, but is, would you use the percent of the ones that are met? For instance, say 70% of students have met their IEP goals, and maybe you'd want the following year, 80% of the students to meet their IEP goals. Would you, do you ever foresee that being a place that you might go with this? Or would that make sense? Or just wanted to get your sort of thoughts on that.
I think it's definitely something that I would like to talk to my team further about. The part of that that I might find a little bit challenging is that it's, when we're talking about goals and objectives, they are really incredibly specific for that student, and there could be any number of reasons why a student might not be able to meet their goal. It could be as a result of an illness. It could be a result of dysregulated behaviors. It could be a result of student absenteeism, and those are all factors that we don't have control over. And, you know, we certainly want to be respectful to the needs of these particular students. You know, I'm not opposed to discussing them with them, but I do see some barriers to that being a programmatic goal for us.
Yeah. No, I was just curious if it was some, I didn't know if that's where these, some of these action steps made me think maybe you were headed that way, and I just wasn't sure. So I wanted to get your thoughts. I didn't want you to speak.
The goal in the action steps is really to, historically, goals and objectives have been written more discipline-specific. And one of the things that Ms. Leary is really working on her team with is to make them so that the goals and objectives are more universal. So it's, if there is a student that has a specific goal for speech and language, that those objectives can be worked on in multiple settings, across multiple areas of the school. So it's really about making sure that those kids can generalize those skills, regardless of the setting that they're in. And that kind of is a little bit of a different way than we've looked at them in the past.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that thoughtful response. And lastly, something that CPAC seems to mention that when I'm hearing them, we've been in, I've been in group, monthly group meetings with you and them, an elementary inclusion model seems very important to them, and I didn't really read anything specific to that in here. Is that something that you wanted to just hit on, that you might be doing differently as a result of it being a priority of theirs?
Sure. So, you know, as you saw on our goal, what did come up out of our progress monitoring last year is that our rates are not as closely aligned to the state of Massachusetts as we would like them to be. What we have started to do as a result of that is we meet monthly as an inclusion team, and we are starting to work with our high school and middle school models because inclusion is already built into those, and we're really looking at how are they doing that successfully with the hopes of bringing it down to elementary school at some point.
Okay, the hopes of, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
So hopefully, that, like I said, it sounded like it was a very big priority to them. So that would be great if you can continue those conversations with them around, you know, trying to flesh that out as much as possible. Thank you. And I appreciate all the work you all do every day. It's really hard work and thank you for all you do. And thank you for your patience on my questions.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the plan. And I'm comfortable with changing the language in that one goal to the special education team will continue to work closely with CPAC. Just that one change, because I agree with Mrs. Purdey on that one thing. So my motion is, do I have to make the motion to amend it first and then? I did it one, okay.
All in favor of approval? I do want to say one thing, though. And we did approve it, but I love your team. I think you're passionate, you're professional, you're compassionate. And you have such a complex department, like between academic, social, state rules, regulations, you know, all professional development, IEPs, all the things that are continuously changing. And every year you come here and you, and you just present and make us feel like these students are really in great hands. And I really mean that 100%. And I think the students feel it, you know, they can feel the passion and the compassion from the team. My only comment would have been that you're trying to scare students by making them research rent and cars and food. They may not want to leave school. They should just stay, it's not a good, not a good place for them to research. But I really thank you so much for the work that you do. It's really important and I think we are very fortunate here with the team that we have. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you for your support.
And we're all set, right? Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the SSDR data review with Dr. Perkins and Mr. Marani.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you so much for having us tonight to talk about the school safety and discipline reporting. So to begin with, we thought it was important because this can be a very confusing topic. And so we thought it was important to give you a background of where this data comes from and how it ends up within our SSDR report. I do want to thank, though obviously I'm here with Mr. Marani, but I need to thank Dan Pacho and Chris Tierney. We have spent weeks poring over this data and talking. We've met multiple, multiple times. The work that they have done, you know, to prepare us to get here today to talk to you about this has really been amazing. And I'm so appreciative of them helping us pull this PowerPoint together for you. So to start with, the agenda, we're going to go over the terminology, which is important because it is a little bit confusing and you'll see why on the next slide. We'll give you a little bit of an overview, how we go about documenting incidences and disciplinary action in Aspen, how that ends up in the Department of Education's hands and how they look at it and evaluate it. The district and school profile reports, which ultimately are where that information goes after the Department of Education gets it. And then how we use those Edwin reports and view those Edwin reports, which is what we look at when we're looking at things like MCAS data, discipline data. All of that information is housed in a program that's provided to us from the Department of Education called Edwin. So in terms of terminology, so an incident, when we talk about an incident, an incident is an occurrence that includes at least one or more offense. So this is where it does get a little bit confusing. An offense is a violation of a statute or regulation or a student code of conduct which may involve one or more victims and one or more offenders. So you can see, we did a little graphic to try to help make this clear. There could be an incident that occurred on September 20th in one of our schools. John Adams has an incident that requires intervention on September 20th. And that incident, that actually included two offenses. So although, say, it started with fighting, the incident started with fighting, but in the end, the team discovered at the school that the fighting also included bullying. There was bullying that happened online that led to the fighting. So now we have an incident that includes two offenses. So the one incident can include up to five offenses, which can be a little confusing when you're looking at the data. Because sometimes when you're looking at something, it may look like multiple things occurred over a period of time. And it's actually all related to just the one incident. So we just want to make sure that that's clear. Because people use those, we use those terms interchangeably. And it took us quite a bit to correct our own language so that we were all on the same page when, when we were discussing this information. So a disciplinary action is important. It's a corrective measure that's imposed by the school administration on a student who violated school rules or engaged in misconduct. So a disciplinary action could be anything from, the student has to write a letter of apology, to the student is suspended. And Mr. Marani will talk a little bit more about suspensions later in the, in the presentation. And then there is a piece where this is important, and again, he'll speak to it, which is loss of instructional time. So any disciplinary action that results in a student being removed from their regular education program is considered a loss of instructional time. And that is required by regulation to be reported to the Department of Education. So some of the things that we do, like a mediation or a letter, may not be required to be reported to the Department of Education. But an in-building suspension, a student is removed from a classroom, an out-of-school suspension, all of those things are considered to be a loss of instructional time and therefore need to be reported. So in terms of offenses, and there are groups of offenses. So you can see in what we have in front of you on the slide, the offense group is called theft. Within theft, there are multiple categories that are called offense groups. So in all of the, which is why it can get a little bit confusing at the school level. Because, you know, something could happen in a school and a principal is choosing from, is it general theft, motor vehicle theft, or other theft? And so therefore, sometimes the categorization of some of the offenses can get a little bit confusing. But when we look at it, it all fall, ends up falling into the bucket of theft, even though there are subcodes underneath it. And so a reportable offense is a specified offense and offense groups that are analyzed by DZ and utilized to generate reports, regardless of the disciplinary action. So Mr. Marani will talk more about this, but there are certain offenses and offense groups that are required. For instance, bullying is one of them. That is required by regulation to be reported to the Department of Education. There are other groups that are not required to be reported to the Department of Education unless they result in a loss of learning time. And we'll elaborate on that as we move forward. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Marani.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins, good evening, everybody. So as Dr. Perkins mentioned, it is a pretty convoluted process. And when we first started digging into this, it felt like every meeting we had, we were learning more and more, digging deeper and deeper. So we thought it was appropriate just to offer a kind of a zoom-out look at the overview process from when it gets inputted into Aspen at schools. And then eventually how that leads to the reports that we have. So as Dr. Perkins mentioned, we'll have an incident which may or may not include more than one offense. It will include at least one offense. It may or may not include disciplinary action, because it does depend on the offense. But there, they will be reported in Aspen, typically by building administrators. That also depends on the level. So if you're at the high school level, it could be a dean. But generally speaking, it's building administrators who are inputting this information. All of that from Aspen gets submitted to DESI. The difference is DESI will kind of pick and choose what they look at, which speaks to what Dr. Perkins was discussing. I'll go into more details about what they choose to look at and what they choose not to. But again, what they're doing is they're kind of, for lack of a better term, kind of cherry picking certain information based on certain criteria, which I'll share momentarily. And with that information, they'll then generate reports. So the information we have on Aspen essentially gets whittled down to reportable information, which then we can look at. And as Dr. Perkins said, we can look at that in two ways through our Edwin platform, which is the same platform we use when we look at MCAS data. But then there's also information that's shared in the district and school profiles. So that's just the overall process. And so now, just to go deeper into each of those aspects of that, so when the incidents are documented. So there's a variety of codes. This is just a snapshot. So this is one screenshot of the different codes that can be selected when an incident is being documented within Aspen. Just to give a couple of examples as far as reportable, not reportable. The alcohol distribution, that first one at the top, that would be considered reportable. That's one of the offenses that DESI says, regardless of the disciplinary action, that's a reportable offense. Whereas if you go further down to, let's say, class cuts, that is now dependent on the disciplinary action. So if it doesn't lead to a loss of learning or a loss of instructional time, it wouldn't be considered reportable. So in other words, DESI, we still submit that to DESI, but they omit that when they start to analyze and generate the reports. So again, that's the list of the different selections. There's a variety more that people have to choose from. And then also that image to the right there, those are the disciplinary actions that an administrator can select. So again, they're selecting one or more offenses. And then they can also select multiple disciplinary actions as well. So there could be one or more disciplinary actions depending on the offense as well. And so this is what it looks like, kind of difficult to see, so I apologize for that. I'll try to explain it in detail so it's easier to understand. So there's really two parts to this process. The first is reporting the incident, the second is reporting the action or the disciplinary action. So this image shows you what it looks like. So when an administrator is starting to input this information, it prompts them first to just give the basic information. So the student name, the date, the time, the location of where the offense or offenses occurred. And then it will have the option of selecting the first offense, which would be considered the primary infraction, or the primary offense in this case. You'll see that there's also a button there where you can select add. So if a person felt as though there were multiple offenses that deemed being included in this documentation, they could add additional codes, I believe up to five, as Dr. Perkins mentioned. There's also an owner to it. So in other words, if we ever needed to follow up on a particular incident and inquire, the person who submitted it, you're able to see who that is. So back when I was a principal, if I were to submit it, I would select myself as the owner. That way, if Dr. Perkins is looking at the records, she knows she can call me and inquire about that if there's ever a question about a previous incident. There's also QPS incident notes, so that's really the description, that's the narrative. So that's really the important piece for us. We blank that out just for confidentiality purposes. But that allows us to go in and see more of the details of what occurred. That's the most informative piece for us versus the code, it tends to be two or three words. The description, the incident notes, is really helpful to us. You'll notice that there's two bottom boxes as well. Those are the items that will get sent to DESI. So sometimes you'll see it where they might repeat themselves and it's just a reporting aspect. So it's incident notes that get repeated, depending on if it's being reported to DESI or if it's just being documented within the incident notes. And then the next page, a little bit easier to see. This is the second tab. So this is, once somebody submits an incident, they now have the option to add the action, the disciplinary action. So in this case, the top row, the example there, is just a standard detention. And that's one disciplinary action for a particular offense or group of offenses, also known as an incident. But then, as I mentioned, you can have multiple disciplinary actions. So if you look at that bottom example, that bottom image, you can see that there's a suspension out and a suspension in. So in this case, it's one incident but led to two disciplinary actions. So in this case, in this example, there's five total days of suspension. Two of those are out of building, three of those are in building. So that's just the way it's recorded. However, it's all for one incident, which may or may not include more than one offense. So now back to the analysis aspect. As I mentioned during the overview process, so DESI will kind of look at certain information. So there's really, the easiest way to understand it is to break it up into two categories. You have what they identify as reportable. So the examples there, possession of tobacco, fighting, just to list a couple of many. Those are reportable. So regardless of the disciplinary action, those will always be considered during DESI's analysis when they look at the information that we submit to the department. However, the other category is any offense that leads to a loss of instructional time. So whether or not it's deemed reportable or not, if it leads to a loss of instructional time, and examples of those are a removal from classroom, a formal suspension out of building, or a formal suspension in building. Because those are examples of loss of instructional time, those become reportable. So a very common way to explain this is like a cell phone violation. That is not typically a reportable offense. That is not something DESI would look at. Unless all of a sudden there was a significant pattern and for some reason it led to a loss of instructional time for that student, then it becomes something that's considered in the DESI's analysis. And this is just an example of one of the district and school profile reports here. So you'll notice on the left side, it's highlighted as all offenses. So I'll explain the data in just a second. But you have all offenses and then you have another list of different offenses. So those are all considered reportable offenses. And so what this allows viewers to do, and again, this is available in the district and school profile reports, so these are publicly available. What this allows people to do is to look at the amount of students disciplined based on a particular offense. And so just to offer one brief overview of one row, just to explain, you know, how it could be reviewed. If you look at the all students row at the top of the table on the right, we have 249 students out of our 10,268 that were disciplined. In this case, it refers to some form of suspension. So it's not all the discipline that occurs in the city, but it's just suspension. And then what it does is, when you go to the right, it shows the percentage of the 10,268 students that were suspended for one day. That could be in building or that could be out of building. And then as it goes further, the amount of days of suspensions goes up. So another way to look at that is 249, or roughly 2.3, 2.4% of our students were suspended in some manner. And then essentially, as you go to the right, those are parts of that percentage. So 0.7% of those students were suspended for a day. The same amount, 0.7%, were suspended for two to three days, so on and so forth as you move through it. You can get this data, the students, the student groups are the same on the left each time. However, you can select all of, any one of those offenses and the data will adjust so you can start to see the cause of why a student may or may not have been suspended and so on and so forth. I do just want to point out that in this case, the quantities are student-oriented. So you're starting to look at the amount of students that were impacted via disciplinary action, in this case, suspension. There are a lot of reports that we'll share with you later on this evening that are more offense-oriented. So they look at quantities not of students, but of offenses that have occurred. So it's just important to, you know, to say, to verbalize that. Only because there's so many different reports out there, you really have to know what you're looking at to really process it and understand it. So with that, I'll hand it back to Dr. Perkins to talk about some of the Edwin reporting.
So this is just a little bit of a, kind of a cheat sheet for you to help you understand what's reportable and what's not. So you can see that all of the items in yellow are considered they're required reportable offenses by statute or regulation. So in, I just to point out, you see that other little sidebar there that says other non-criminal offenses? Just to remind you that all of these yellow items have subgroups. So each one of them has like, it could be five, six subgroups that principals can use to report, but they all end up under that bucket of other non-criminal offenses, for instance. So the ones that have the asterisk next to it are reportable offenses if they lead to a loss of learning time. So for instance, as Mr. Marani said, an attendance violation is not necessarily a reportable offense unless it leads to a loss of learning time. So just some of the things, you know, to kind of keep in mind when, when you're looking at the data. And so, so what we are, have for you tonight, you have some charts. We'll be providing with charts, I'm not sure if you have them yet or not, that we will, that will go into more specific information because it does. because it does potentially discuss confidential student information. We will talk about it in executive session. And we're happy to answer any questions about the reporting process.
Ms. Guttrow?
Thank you. Super helpful. Looking forward to seeing what you distribute in the executive session. So a couple of questions, but this was good, high-level overview. So did you say annually DESI sends us a report?
Yes. So the information, so what happens is every day, Aspen is talking to the Department of Education's system.
To Edwin?
Not Edwin. Edwin is what actually populates the pretty reports, but the background, I'm not sure what their program is called, but the information from Aspen automatically goes every night to the Department of Education servers or whatever, whatever their software is called.
The Dropbox.
The Dropbox. And so it goes there, and they, and so from there, at the end of the school year, that information, sometimes it will get pushed back with, say, like errors, or this was reported, it looks like it's reportable, but there's, you know, something was wrong with it. We correct those errors, and then they then use that information to then populate the public reports that we just showed you tonight and the reports that then end up on Edwin Analytics, which is what we use to then look at, like for trends and things like that.
Okay. But I was confused about Edwin, but it sounds like we're using one vehicle for reporting. It's Aspen.
Yep.
It sorts the data based on what's reportable and what's not.
Correct.
And transmits it.
Yep.
And then Edmund helps us create the reports to assess.
Right. That's exactly right.
And analyze it. Okay. Very helpful. And so they don't, or they do send us a report each year?
They do send us a report each year. It's lots of reports, and it's published in Edwin Analytics, and then it's also made available. There are public reports that are available on the department and on the school profile page. So every year, we do get that, yes.
And you sent us the link to, you said this is publicly available, some of the sources?
There is, yep. Some of the reports are public. Not all of them, but some of them.
Yeah, I mean, whatever is publicly available. If you could just send us that link, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Couple of more questions, and maybe I'll save some for the executive session. So you define incident, offenses, disciplinary action. So if bullying is a pattern of behavior, is it one incident or multiple?
Well, it could be one incident or it could be multiple. It really depends on, you know, something.
If it just happens once, it's one incident. If it happens three times, it's three incidents?
It could, yes, that very well could be, yep. Or there could be, it really depends on, you know, how it's looked at. So something could happen, you know, there could be something that happens three times before a student reports it. And so then that report includes all three of those incidences, and now it's identified as bullying. Or it could be a student who has a bullying incident day one, and then a different bullying incident day two, and a different bullying incident day three, and now it's three separate incidences. And many times, it involves lots more students than just one student.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I think I'll probably save the rest of my questions because I mean, I'm curious about like a pie chart of having the incidents like in the high schools. You know, 33% are vaping related or X percent are bullying related, you know, just so that we can see. And then what are the trends over the course of the years that we can see?
And we, you're going to get that in a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo? You're good. Oh, you're good now? Okay. Mr. Begoli?
I have a couple of questions. So the principal is the person who meets up to discipline for an in-school?
Or the assistant principal. It could be the assistant principal too, or at the high school, the dean.
Do they have discretion as to where they categorize a certain type of behavior?
Yes.
So are they affected by the way they meet up to discipline because of DZ's recording of incidents?
No. 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 I'm not, I mean, I don't know how aware they are about the reportable versus not reportable or, I mean, I think to them, it's all a disciplinary offense, and if it's a suspension, it's a suspension. I don't think that they make any decisions based on what's going to get reported to the Department of Ed or that kind of a thing.
That's an assumption.
Yeah.
So first, they're sent to the office, possibly, across. How many times that have to happen before it rises to the level of reportability?
Well, if it was the majority of the day or a good chunk of the day, that's considered an in-building suspension. And yes, it is, and it should be reported. Mm-hmm. And we do talk to the principals about that all the time. If you keep a student down in the office, you know, something happens in the morning and you keep that student down in the office for the rest of the day, that is now an in-building suspension.
Okay, that's a hearing.
Not for an in-building suspension. It's not required. So they're supposed to make outreach to the parent, but they don't actually, and offer a meeting, but they can impose an in-building suspension before they have a hearing.
All right. I've heard a couple of questions about incidents that happen outside of school and whether the police is involved. They involve our students and, you know, the serious incidents and how it impacts our kids and their relation to what they can participate in school. So where does that, where does that stand in terms of they have to go to court? And if it's adjudicated and they're guilty?
Yeah.
Then they are not able to participate?
Yes.
But if it's not adjudicated, they are still, even though they have an pending case against them, they can still participate in what they are, what they're doing in school, correct or not?
Well, it really depends. So if the incident causes a substantial disruption to the school day, if it, that's one of the criteria. The incident in question has to pose a substantial detrimental impact on the order of the school operations and the school day. Or if, in the instance where I think you're kind of referring to like a felony, for instance, a felony, a district cannot do anything, cannot impose a restriction if the felony, the issue or the felony incident, if the student has not been arraigned. So regardless of whether or not it's adjudicated guilty or not adjudicated at that moment, it's when they are arraigned and charged with a felony, then the school district can act.
Whether they're found guilty or not?
Whether, if they've been charged with a felony, then the school district can act, regardless of whether or not they've been found guilty yet.
Okay. So they're guilty until proven innocent?
That's what the regulations say, I guess. Yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you.
All set. Mrs. Pardeos?
Thank you. Ms. Begoli was kind of traveling down the path that I was going to ask about more in the, if the principals have, or the deans or the assistant principals have discretion, how are we making sure that it's uniform or even, evenly distributed across schools? And are those, and maybe secondly, are those disciplinary actions kind of listed or somewhat alluded to in the student handbooks?
Yes. Oh, all of it's in the student handbooks. Absolutely. But I would say, like in terms of the uniform, I think that what is uniform is that when a student violates a code of conduct or a regulation or a statute, every single one of our principals is going to, you know, report it and potentially, depending on what the offense is, impose some kind of discipline. I think that where the discretion comes in is what they code it. So I think that sometimes, and I do think that Mr. Marani, Mr. Pacho, Mr. Tierney, we've been talking about this. I do think we do have some work to do there as a district on, you know, making sure that we have similar understanding of what the different offense codes mean. And there's a lot of offense codes for principals to choose from. And so, you know, like I'll give you an example, under illegal drugs, there's possession of marijuana, there's marijuana usage, there's distribution of, or I should say, illegal drugs. There, you know, there's distribution of illegal drugs, there's just drug use, you know? And so principals do have pretty broad discretion about, you know, which one they choose in terms of what the incident was. And so sometimes what we see is, well, we have these five incidences that are in drug use and these five incidences that are in paraphernalia, but they're really all the same thing. They're all THC cartridges or something like that. Like, so why, you know, why are some people labeling it drug use and some people labeling it paraphernalia? You know? So I think that that's where we have some work to do, is just clarifying like what, how we refer to incidences in Aspen in terms of their codes. But I can tell you with 100% certainty that if there's a handbook violation or a statute violation or a regulation violation, all of our principals report it and they impose disciplinary action when they need to.
Yeah, I guess it's the disciplinary action. I know we're trying to do more restorative justice measures, and you know, if one student is vaping in a school and they're doing a restorative justice, you know, disciplinary action penalty, or another school where they're, you know, suspending them or something, like we just, you know, as long as they're in a line, you know, the coding, I understand, you know, paperwork-wise, why that could be difficult, but I'm more concerned about the outward, you know, parents' experience of, you know, their child going through this, you know, needs to be somewhat similar where if you're having, you know, vaping, it's pretty uniformly, this is the penalty. You know, and I don't know if that's something that you talk about with principals across?
We do. Yeah, we definitely do. I would, I will say, there is, every incident is different, you know, and some students have repeated disciplinary offenses, you know? So all of that does come into consideration. But the principals are really good about calling too and asking, like, you know, this is what's happened, this is what the history is, you know, and we talk through it. But we do, we talk about it constantly.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
All set? Okay. We're all set. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have 2025-2026 school committee calendar for referral to policy subcommittee by Mr. Guttrow. All set?
We don't actually have the calendar.
We do not.
No. We'll review it in policy subcommittee.
So this is just a motion that a calendar will be put in committee, and then after the new year, we'll talk it through?
And then we'll have it at the meeting and discuss it.
Very good.
Yep. And the same thing with the 2025-2026 QPS school year calendar for referral to policy subcommittee. Mr. Guttrow?
I assume it's the same thing. We actually don't have either calendar, but this is kind of SOP that we do.
Moving into committee for discussion and then to move it to the regular meeting.
Yeah, and I don't know if these are voice votes or?
No, we're just moving it into, nope.
On the motion.
Yeah, we're just moving it into subcommittee.
She had a question on the motion.
There was no motion.
Well, she had a question on the issue.
I just had a question on the item on the agenda.
Will we be, will the policy subcommittee be seeing multiple drafts of the school year calendar? Last year and the year before, there were a couple of different drafts that included different holidays in it. Or will the policy subcommittee, the draft they see just include one version? And maybe this is a question for the superintendent.
That's up to the committee to determine how many drafts will be presented to, and it'll be up to the committee chair how many drafts are presented to the school committee and what those drafts look like. It could be a draft of what has been done in the past. It could be a draft of additional holidays that other members may like to see. That really is up to the chair of the committee.
So which?
When you say committee, do you mean school committee or?
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
The subcommittee is going to get the policy.
I understand, I heard.
And the calendars, and we review them. We decide what's going to go forward to the main committee for further discussion and vote.
Right. I'm just curious as to what drafts will be proposed at the policy subcommittee meeting, whether there will be a draft that is just one draft you're looking at and you're saying yea or nay, or whether you'll have multiple drafts? And maybe it's a question for Mr. Guttrow as the chairman.
If you're imparting that power on me, I'm going to suggest that we replicate the approved calendar from last year, and that when we're in committee, we have discussion. We can take motions, we can make amendments, we could do whatever we choose to do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So next, we have the, what? Yeah. Process for review, selecting curriculum materials, Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you. During the school improvement plans, we heard from several schools how they're trying to get some multicultural books and literature, pieces of literature and also texts into their schools. But before that, we had also heard from Dr. Perkins that we had a very specific method of approving books that were going to schools, and that she actually had a person who read all the books. So I'm trying to make sure that we have policies in place to ensure that all of our schools and levels have culturally responsive texts and literature for our students to access, and also that we have policies in place if there's a challenge to any of those books, that we have a policy in place to address a challenge to a book. Because I think once we start bringing in all these books, we're going to get challenges.
Is that a, is that a teaching and learning or should it go into a policy? So do we discuss it at a teaching and learning committee and then?
There may be a policy out there, but I don't know if there is or not. I think we should discuss it in teaching and learning and move it into policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda, which requires a roll call vote. We need a motion to accept everything under.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mrs. Lebo, second by Mr. Begoli. Roll call? On the motion.
I did want to just.
Where are you?
Sorry. I did want to just add to this. Under the 745 hand-knit hats, some of them were store-bought, but I wanted to make, just have a shout-out also to Andrea Huwaw from the Director of Health Services, because I did this collection, and I put 745 hats, mittens, and scarves in her office to distribute to all of the school nurses. So I want to do a shout-out to her, thanking her for all of her hard work on this, distributing those to our school nurses. It's not a small task, so I appreciate all of her help. So I want to make sure I add that in.
Perfect. Thank you. Superintendent?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pardeos?
Yes.
May I come?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. So next, we have executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session, and we will not be coming back to the regular meeting.
Make a motion. We go to executive session with the purpose of discussing statistics related to discipline, and we will not be returning to regular session.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hubley. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we're going to roll call? Roll call vote?
Mr. Begoli? Yes. Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pardeos?
Yes.
May I come?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. So next, we have reports of subcommittees.